Basically called the July twelfth, twenty twenty one. Westport Town Council meeting to order and we'll have standing. And please listen.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, individual with liberty and justice.
I'd like to welcome everybody that's here this evening, both in the audience and our viewing audience, but people see it at home. First thing we have on our agenda is the approval of the management of the June fourteenth, twenty twenty one council meeting. And is there any addition or corrections to those minutes?
Um, I read them and I saw no additions or corrections, so I make the motion that we move them unless you want to.
I second that all in favor. Okay, the next one is July the eighth, we had a public hearing. Condemnation hearing the eighth and uh. Were you able to read those? Any additional corrections for those?
I'll make the motion.
All right, I'll second that all in favor, aye. Okay, the next thing is approval of funeral. Funeral fees, favorable vouchers, adjustments, monthly bills.
Make the motion that we move on these also.
I will second that all in favor. And we now assign those to the end. Speaking of time, okay, Rachel, you're up next on the Westport Water Project update change order.
I actually have a couple of things to go over, but I was trying to be. Okay, so here's the update. A bunch of pictures at the end.
Oh my goodness.
So we're moving along nicely out of the at the water. We've got our treatment tanks delivered. We've got the carbon filter delivered, which is what's gonna make sure that nothing.
Is that that cow run thing?
Yep, that's the one on the left. Yep.
Cow runs carbon.
Yep, that's the carbon. We got a couple of pictures in here of how they install the filters, which can then be used to drain and drop them through the roof. I wasn't there that day, but. Okay, so with that, this week is a little slow out there, kind of waiting on stuff to be delivered. The next step is to finish putting all the internal components in the treatment plant and then plumbing it all up, all the piping. And after that, they'll start with the actual chemical feed equipment, all the electronics and that sort of thing, so. They're making progress. Still keep adding all the latest little things due to. Getting years to explain, you know.
Didn't come from China.
Although they don't have to come from America, so. Just got stuck in Arizona or something. Anticipated completion date is the end of September. One thing I was thinking, it's end of July, but maybe we think about in October sometime having a little open house. Once it's all done and it's pretty clean and the justice settled and the paving is complete, might be nice. Division B, they haven't done much this month, however, because they were coming up on their substantial completion date and we saw a couple of uninvolved items out there. I have a couple of change orders to add some time to their, to their contract. The next step for them is to get the elevated tank contractor out here and do the repairs to the elevated tank. That'll be the next step. I do have several pay requests. I have a, and I think you can probably approve all the pay requests that's wanted. I have a pay request of semen, pay request number eight. And I have a pay request of the three and the four for Omera. And this brings them up to current, it brings Omera up to fifty percent complete and semen up to sixty.
Yeah, we will make a motion, I will make a motion that we go ahead and approve those.
I will second that motion all in favor.
Yes, that's it, all right.
Okay, the last couple, last couple of things I have, I do have some change orders, so. These three was the one that was listed on the agenda, that is adding the time, forty five additional days to Omera's contract. Now, if our loop extends beyond that, we'll do another time extension later, but this should get them through, through the work on the elevated tank and hopefully have a resolution. No cost with that. Change order number four, B four is actually a credit back to the project of fifteen thousand dollars. This is eliminating something that we had included on the elevated tank that's really not necessary. And then I do have a change order for semen out of the plant. And this is several items that we discussed at the last construction meeting, including the can bring pumps, alignment. Polylone valves that we credited back, raising the road asphalt so that the pump that are active in the plant. Total of this one is four thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars and thirty seven. Think you can probably prove all these that I want to go?
Yeah. I'm making motion that we approve them all.
I second that motion. All in favor, aye.
Any questions?
No, yeah, I have one. What? Work is left here in Westport and corporate name is with Omera.
It should just be cleanup stuff, fixing some of the meters that had issues. I think they have two hydrants left.
And are they the ones that come back and resurface where they have the tear down?
Yeah, that's on the punch.
Okay.
I told me the other day that they have some county roads to do here in town. So if I'm not in town, sorry, in our area. So they're on the way until they do those or not send some vice beer with.
Is one of the. In a word, the basters. Is that that one over there?
Yeah, that's one last one. We have no one leaking over the. Of Williamson apartments. It's kind of hard to see, I just put the apartment. Actually, next to an alley.
What did you find if our hydro next to Joyce's house and people live there?
We have, we just, we got into the water problem in the yard or so.
And it's not getting off of any much meter, but.
No, it's, it's not. It's a leak somewhere. That's where the ground is dry, it's still very soft, but right there.
I don't see anybody got any questions for Rachel? For the project? There being none, then Rachel.
Did you have a construction be Thursday morning?
Both Omera.
Right now it's just semen and I've invited Omera. He said he had a conflict, but he couldn't see. Hopefully he can.
Okay, so we go along, the next thing on the agenda is the government alley ordinance. Okay, this is ordinance number twenty twenty one dash five. It's an ordinance of the town of Westport establishing new one-way streets. Whereas it is the responsibility of the town council of Westport, Indiana to provide for public safety, health and welfare. The citizens of the town of Westport and whereas in carrying out this responsibility. The town council of Westport has determined that it is in the best interest of said citizens. That two existing two-way streets should become one-way streets for vehicle or traffic purposes. Now therefore be it ordained by the town council of Westport, Indiana, that the following streets shall have two-way traffic removed. And one-way traffic shall be established as follow. Number one. Johnson Avenue shall be designated one-way traffic traveling west from Walnut Street to Government Avenue. Number two, Government Avenue shall be designated one-way traffic traveling north from Johnson Place to East Main Street. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage. Okay, I think since we don't have the full town council here, we haven't had the reading.
Well, you probably could do it all in one reading.
I make the motion we pass this, John.
I'll second that motion. Is that, will that suffice?
You'd have to first move to pass it on first reading.
Will that ever come from Joyce saying she wants to move?
I'll move that we.
Pass it on first reading, okay. All in favor, aye. I'm sorry.
Then you have to do a vote to pass it.
Oh.
I vote yes.
You moved to pass it.
I moved to pass it.
That's why.
That's why I always have Scott here correct us, make sure we're doing.
Papers are right.
Yeah, paperwork's right, that's great, they did it. So I'll second that motion all in favor, aye.
Did I hear him say Johnson Place? They didn't say Johnson Avenue?
I heard him say Johnson.
Yes. He did say Johnson Place on it, and when I look at G I S, it says Johnson Place on G I S.
Are you serious?
See, I thought Johnson, Johnson Place, so I'll be around it. This is Johnson Avenue.
Lane, that's Johnson Lane.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure to crack on the paper.
Well, I'm just going by what I just grabbed, that why G I S has that listed as and it says Johnson Place on there.
Okay, we can't get it straight. We dealt with them for like two years and.
Oh, D I S says Johnson Place, right?
Probably, yeah.
Google Maps is wrong. They tell me I don't. But this address, we don't know.
Yeah, you can't, you can't Google map to here.
No, it's craziness.
Okay. The next one was rental inspection requirement in Westport, but John is going to carry that one.
It says Johnson Avenue on Beacon on our G I S.
That is crazy.
Oh, you want me to just strike them, the avenue or?
Yeah, I think everybody knows what street we're talking about.
Next thing we had on the northern, on the agenda was rental inspection requirement in Westport. And I think John was one who's going to discuss that, wasn't he?
Yeah, and he created an example ordinance. Based on his research and he was going to retype that and bring that tonight, but he's not here, so we can't.
What that is and we're planning there looking at it, we received. Various complaints from renters and I'll tell you some of the ones, it's either mold, mildew, bed bugs. I had someone come to us and say that a human excrement come up in the bathtub. Saying. One person in that one rental or foot went through the floor. There's some people. Buying up homes. That need work done and renting them out to anybody because people want to rent them out. I had somebody one time with a home that we had condemned. Somebody stopped me when I was on the, my golf cart and wanted to rent it out. And so we can't rent that out because we condemned it. But so people. At a certain level are desperate for rental property. So. Westport, what was it, about sixty percent of Westport is rental property. So for a small town, that's, that's a struggle with the things that we want to do and the things that we want to accomplish. And before this, we've had no way of saying to some people that rent homes out, you're going to at least. Try to provide a place that's safe and habitable for children and families and not. Get into the point where you got mold and mildew and so many other environmental hazards within that house. And it's not conducive to the health and welfare of the people that live here in Westport. And some people just want to rattle some feathers, I understand that, but still. We as the town council, I'm sure Joyce might agree with this, should speak to it. It's our duty, see that we have a safe working environment here, the citizens that live here in Westport. And we're slowly moving in that direction and I feel compelled to do that. Us, we're responsible deeply and thanks for the goes on in the town. And we want people to enjoy the town of Westport, to, to. Have a healthy environment here in Westport, we're cleaning up the water, we're going to be working on the sewer system. And that's kind of this falls in line with, but anyway, I'll stop there. Now, let's Joyce must say something, but John was kind of getting this up.
I, I kind of differ with you when it comes to sixty percent rental property here.
It is.
Personally, though, personally, I have seen two or three rental properties that have been out so next to me, so. So I, I'm happy with that. And I think that I agree with you a hundred percent that, that if you're a landlord. You really should take responsibility and have a good place for those folks because I don't know if it's still on the books, but I do know at one time there was a law. That said that if your house leaked or if you had a problem, you didn't have to pay rent until they fixed it. You know, I don't know if that's still on the books or whatever, but I do know that there are people that you. If you raise a cane with the landlord, they'll just tell you to move because there's always somebody waiting, waiting in there. But I don't know what we can do to make them fix it. Roy just called the board of health when he found that somebody's bathroom was. Plushing right in the yard by our house, that, I mean, we asked the people who owned it and they said, well, it ain't mine and it was. But they didn't do anything about it, so yeah, I think that everybody has the right. If you're seeing something like that in your yard or next door to you, you have the right to call the board of health and have them check on it. But yeah, there, there's got to be something that you can do to a landlord also. I understand that they, they're, you know, you don't want to, you want to make money doing this. Renting houses, you want to make money so that you will be comfortable, but. Some of them don't realize that they're running to. Danger, people are running dangerous places. Do we not have a house that's already been condemned over here and some guy bought it, moved in?
No.
And it was a meth house? I mean, this is the sort of thing that I don't understand.
Well. And we had another instance where I, we had a dwelling here in Westport which condemned by the health department. And the people that rented it out laid down. But they, then they didn't receive or let it to the health department, they turned right around and re-rented it out again. So when we phoned the health department and said, hey, what's going on? They said, well, we didn't know anything about. So. We, what happened after that, I don't know, but then. Some people backdooring even the health department, it was condemned by the health department, so they got certain things fixed up. And lo and behold, what'd they do? They rented it right back at somebody else. So those were issues that. Unfortunately, there's a small minority of people that do do things like that. It's incumbent upon us, John was looking into this, it's saying, whoa, wait a minute. We're going to take some responsibility within our town, we'll look into this and say, no, it's not safe. But anyway, not that. Okay, then next on the list, we, we talked about this, I've since learned. Scotty. Put in on this about the annexation of Washington Street, we talked about that. And I guess what the law has changed, we have to get a hundred percent. Everybody that lives on that area that we want to annex has to agree to that annexation.
I don't think they have any problems.
What we would have one whole.
I don't think there'd be a problem, do you? Do you know of anybody?
Yeah.
The only annexation that I remember of all that's been all.
Right. Most people I think would be for that, but I think I know.
There's the thought process of trying to give some incentive. For that, and then we talked about that.
Not paying.
See, on that side, and that side of the road too. It's, we service that other side on Washington Street and it's just. I don't think is, is the, where we've got the refuge area or recycling center, I'm not sure if I'm right word, I guess. Is that in the town of Westport or is that? Okay, see, we got another area, okay, so you go along Washington Streets, we got an half the side. We're talking about the other side going down, then you make a lap down the street and back there's a recycling center. And then back behind the recycling centers are more like waste. And trying to get all that in within that area all within.
And our, the waste treatment plant belongs to the town, where it just said, but it's outside the limits, we'd like to put that back in.
I think I probably recommend checking. I just hate for us to do that. I'm not saying that would be a whole lot, but I think I'll check on it and make sure it gets through there. That might be wiped out.
Okay, but.
That could, that could be.
But it, your water plant can be in town?
And they have sewage plants in town that are mechanical. But they're not with.
I know which. Yeah, and green circuits are.
They do that for a reason. Well, I mean, I mean, we don't know what reason is, well, I guess there goes there, something else to look into, why? Why is it always set out there like that? Cause it goes back, what would you?
I mean, what would be the reason that?
Well, there isn't any, but I did. Since, since, since we're going in that area.
Yeah, there's no reason, I don't have a.
I, I would say the only reason is we only own half the street. So if we annex both sides of the street, we're able to maintain their street for them, which could be a benefit.
We can annex the street, we don't have to annex the property on site, because I know. On that note, we're the county on half that's three. And the town have, and then the county commissioners signed off on, that's how we did the voluntarily, voluntary annexation. Commissioners said, go ahead and take the other half of. Street, you know what we could do, then we brought that street into their inventory and they also used it when they went through their open grants. Aiden.
That would help us also.
There's another thing involved too. And there's been talk in this material, the other one, the county that that other half of the road would be because of the nine eleven. Half would be a Westport address and the other half would be a what?
But probably it's a bit of Westport risk, but they're just going to think that. A number of roads that have Washington Street. Yeah, the south side would be, so you pull fifty south and your neighbor across the road is Washington Street and it's literally the same road.
Right, it's all Orchard Street. It'd be a good reason to do that street.
But you have, you know, you want to get the commissioners on board.
Right.
You know, they take something off their plate to maintain, so they might be agreeable.
I've had women there discuss since one morning. But yeah, I'd like to tell them that's, that's, that, so we got to have all this, this side, have to have the service in front of me to. Be a Westport address, but it'd be a different, won't like be for a Washington Street.
Remind me to take that to the meeting.
Well, I'm good, I'm coming with a good reason, I'm glad of that, okay. Okay, the next thing. Next thing we have on the agenda is women there talking about having a Westport traffic. And the town council is. I'm in favor of Johnson, very brother. I think before, somebody told me that maybe it was during your term, that you were thinking about doing this once before.
No, and as we talked in our last meeting, our public meeting. There's a lot involved in it, there's time frames, like you can't, you can't do it, and I think that's something to look at.
But we'd like to look into, it's not, if it's not feasible, at least we'd like to have the information to say, well, you know.
I mean, if it's when they're, I think the statute where I was looking at, it said. Twenty-two. That's every, well, about two thousand nineteen was the elections and then be twenty twenty-three, the first election you could have, board it down. Judge. I think I have a little bit of time, but I think you guys would really want to see that.
And the aspects of, if we look at, I know law enforcement spoke about it too. Count Mars.
Because it's a lengthy decision, the. Indianapolis that handle the judicial. Aspects of everything will be involved in that. Salary that a judge has to pay and all that kind of stuff. Might be more involved in what. Might be more costly than what it could be, maybe, and I think the state normally pays judges salary. So they improve that, I think the state pays for it.
Oh, wow.
Be great.
I'm not sure exactly what does it, if getting it approved.
We're serious about it and if it's not, if it's not feasible, then it's not feasible, but. I would like, rest of town council would like to say that, okay.
At least make a decision as to which way.
We don't have enough information. And coupled with that. Oh, about to, some type of animal control later on too, but tie it all together. So.
That's a lot easier to do than.
Yeah.
Those, those are two things.
I think you already have, you have some animal control ordinance that's already in place, right?
Well, we don't have any animal control people there.
Well, our police department does a great job of, of trying. I mean, I know that most of them have been out on dog runs, haven't you? And, you know, especially if somebody gets hit or hurt or, you know, attacked.
And I know we talked about that whole class of part-time individual.
Right.
That does the.
And it might be something that we talk to, I think about. It could be a per basis, you know, you get paid for whatever you do, you know, if you don't.
Do you think taking them up to the animal shelters everywhere and take them up the hole?
I think so, I think they have a hole that you can place for them for a little bit and then if they're not, the orders, if they're not picked up within a certain period of time, then they take them to the.
Well, and that's something that we, we don't want our officers to have to be doing that.
No.
We need somebody that would transfer them if they're.
That's something we want to look into, is to see if it's feasible to do that, I mean. Was that true, kind of thing about Damon, this, oh, so do we have a rabbit? Raccoon or possum something in town a few weeks ago?
Rabbit wins, how do you know they're rabbits?
I don't know, but I was down there with Joe and somebody called in and said, oh, they're.
Was it?
Bars, big air sensors, rabbit. Either possum or raccoon running loose, because they attacked a bird and that's some other stuff, so they had to, so we went over there to.
So I don't know how they would know it's a rabbit. Coon will attack a bird anyway.
Now, we had a couple coons this year, uh.
Yeah, I was raccoon, that's right.
Came in, you know, kind of typically, the coon comes to you during the day or night, or there's something going. Relocated two of them this year here in Harris Town.
But I do, but I think.
Anyway, that was kind of we got on the side note, but with between that. We gotta add a little bit of that. But uh, those were, those are other issues we want to look at, is it feasible, is it possible? Is it something we should pursue or not pursue? Trying to have this.
Okay.
Okay, other than that, we are done with the agenda, so I'll open it up. Rachel, do you have anything else to say? I don't know, I can't think, so.
Thank you. Yeah, uh, we have a trailer down here on the East Second West last year, I won't say it's real time. They had a sewage problem underneath the trailer, it's a long foundation on a trailer. Three twelve, the landlord has been notified that fix one of their their bikes has broken into the house. And there's sewer running out of the house that's to the point where it's seeping through the cinder block. Ground in the front yard is flooded, it's nasty. Landlord, again, the landlord doesn't seem to be worried about fixing it, but I'm to the point where I think we need to go to board of health.
Right, exactly.
Tell them his role, so he kind of.
I think if you just called him, you get, you if somebody just called him, or we could call him or you can call him, that's all it takes. Right, that's all it takes.
It's nasty down there a bit more, and it's. Because it ran, we went over there, there was a couple of our problems. We went over, unplugged it from the form, and it ran through the city sewer for like a couple hours straight, because the water was so, sewage water was so low, the trailer. It was nonstop.
I was over there fielding a complaint not too awfully long ago, maybe last summer. And the people that lived there at that time said, I want you to come in here and look, you could actually put your hand through the wall.
I don't know, it's something you guys can report to the board.
Yes, it definitely has.
I know, he's down, I'm sure. What happened, you want to think?
Our letter, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to give them the address. Tell them to protect the board, ask them, you know, put it off.
There.
I know there's little kids up there.
Oh.
I shouldn't say little kids, they're, I don't know, I guess they're eighteen as well. I'm not sure if I know the smaller kids.
But then that that falls back to what we're talking about as far as this rental inspection, yeah. And that's happened before because another property owner, the landlord said it was a town's problem. About the sewer, I had you guys go over, it wasn't, it was underneath the house. And some people that own rental property are reluctant to. Get under there to do major repairs, do repairs necessary to get that going, here's another example right here, that's.
Right, being that, just someone I'm thinking of, you're coming, I can fix it, just so. Because of the basement, that basement was like three steps into the basement, it's full of sewer water.
Yeah.
Now, how you don't know your basement is full of sewer water, I don't, I don't know, but now he just uses it knowing. As soon as I walk in, I think, yes, I'm talking. It ended up being on the way across the side, golden eye, very far from the basement, just.
It's amazing.
Yeah, it's almost.
Scott, can, let's use this as an example, if the town fix that, can we charge, go back and charge? How how does that work? If if we deem that, this is theoretical, okay? Damon thinks that it's a health issue, and he's gone out there to look at where we've got raw sewage. Coming out like that, and and we repair it, can we charge?
I I say, I, I don't know the answer to this without going through the condemnation process.
All right.
You can if you go through the public hearing process and.
Right.
And.
You send them a bill, that don't mean nothing.
Pay it, but and I don't know what the ordinance talks about it or not, but I know statute on that. Unbelievable. Buildings, obviously, you go through that, what we have been doing, so yeah, condemnation process, and then you repair it, then you absolutely can kind of charge that. Prior to that, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so you're some. I mean, there there's, there's a point, it's it's a small community, we can try to deep implement and try to help people out, but then. Bad innocent case be done, you've got small children left inside.
Whether there's an aspect of it being somewhat of an emergency, whether or not it's an emergency. Fishes out there that would allow you to charge back if it's an emergency repair.
And then, you know, we want to try to stand help as much as possible, and especially if there's children involved in it. And we just can't keep waiting to go on, because if you get with the health department, then you've got this time like this and it's going on, and meantime, it's still got all this. All sewage pumping out, so I guess what I need, or maybe for the town council, where's the, you know, where's our line? We can't cross, or can we go in there on an emergency basis and say, hey? You you got to get this money back, that's, and then that, and then we go in and do it, uh. You know, we're using taxpayers' money to to fix that, so where's the line? I guess I don't know.
Just so you know, in this situation, it's not long, we're not going to build today, so it's not going to be pumped out right out.
It's been there too long, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's like a swimming pool, it was, I hadn't seen it for, you know, a week or so.
Right, worse now.
Yeah, probably.
Whatever, whatever, no, whether. I mean, it's going to be dried out, it might. Get in there and do it.
I'm talking to Alex, guidelines like that, where where, I mean, we want to help out, we want to improve up again, we go, just second work, and he goes, yeah.
I'd say we just call the board of health and let them condemn it. The trailer should have been condemned.
Yeah, and 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 this goes back to when the board of health was called before by a private individual. And that house was condemned, and those people played around with the registered letters, and they didn't get it, did all this, played game on that. Bobby Darnold didn't turn right around, and that condemned house out. So the board helped, and then we called the board of health, board of health said, hey, we didn't know anything about it. Yeah.
So maybe they stepped up to their side.
Absolutely.
Hey, sorry, folks, this may have been, get out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. They should have backed there on.
All people have their ways, and I do feel sorry for them, but wow.
So, you know, we're we're wrestling with that problem because of this delay, people know how to play the game, and then, you know. Uh, lack of communication between all this, and pretty soon, then we got, we got that, so I'm not sure, I know what I want to do, I just don't have sleep. Like you, I I'd say, oh, uh, back out of this house so they can fix it instead, and we do it. Say, let's go. Everyone I work for. Always really good.
Which is, uh, I got a question, would it be easy if a big family gets in there?
Yeah, but can we do that?
So why? I don't know, you can't, I don't know.
As far as I know, we can't go in and victim, we don't know the property.
And if you, if you try to evict somebody and they pay a monthly rent, you got a whole month there before you could ever even make that.
I don't see what we'd have, right?
I wouldn't either, yeah.
No trailer park can evict their.
Trailer park owns the property.
Yeah, there's the difference or something.
Those that own our own trailers though. They victim sometimes in trailer groups, they can't move.
Yeah.
So. I mean, there might be something there that you might be able to look at as a town, if it's a health issue also. We're trying to, you know, I won't belabor the point anymore, but we're trying to look in other avenues. But it goes back to the goal, we want a safe working environment for the people that live here in the town of Westport. And to keep the property value set the best that we can. And attract other like-minded people, I guess you'd say, they want a quiet community and want to feel. These are the goals that we're working for. Can can we accomplish that? I'm not exactly, that's one of the. Legal team, I'm not legal team, while we have a town attorney.
It's a team tonight, I guess.
Yeah, tonight, tonight is a legal team. But to to help us navigate some of these things, so we're doing it in a legal and a proper way doing things. And and Joyce can speak up, and I'll quit, been on the hobby horse. I don't particularly like keep tightening up ordinances unless we have to, I don't like passing the ordinance and more and more ordinance. That's counterproductive, but it seems like if you've got a minority of people doing some of this stuff, then we're going to have to come back, okay? We're we're going to come back with an ordinance, like what Damon pointed out, you you can't have raw sewage running out on the ground, I mean, you know, you can't. I mean, that's, that's just, anyway, now for that, I just, I'm passionate about that, I guess. I'm sorry, next, you have anything?
No.
Right, what?
Um, I guess what I need to know is, is there a limitation or any kind of ordinance to begin parking a camper? On my property on four or five West Mulberry Street, I parked a camper over there for a while, maybe three or four months, maybe five months.
Is parking the camper, but that if nobody could live in it, because what I think the county ordinance is what?
Thirty days, I think.
Thirty days.
Yeah, you you can park your camper on your property that you can't live in. Okay.
Oh, no, no, that's.
Yeah, you can park it.
Park motorhome camper and anything, because that's your property, that's no problem, but what it probably becomes. Like Joyce said, and it's it's a county ordinance as well, you can't be living in. Uh, travel trailer, motorhome, anything like that, any more than thirty days, I believe, is that right? I think that's right.
And you have to have uh all your hookups and everything.
Right. So I hope I answered your question, yeah, you would be. As long as it's got plates on it, runs, if you, as a motorhome, if it's a travel trailer, as long as it's got a current plate on it, and. It's, uh, we might. Bust a little bit, if it was something like about nineteen forty nine and the things was, metal was falling off of it, and. That's kind of counterproductive of what we're trying to do here in town, that that kind of things we're trying to get rid of, not add more to it, but um.
So it won't, it won't fit in the garage, so. I just didn't want to pull it over.
Just make sure it's on your property.
Yeah. It'd be in the middle of the park. Thirty-two foot, that's pretty much takes over.
That's, that's the only stipulation. I mean, I, I, yeah, like I said, it's, like, some of the ones we got in here, at a certain person's property. That's not in the direction we want to go with Westport. We're trying to. Improve the the looks and, well, like last year, and then I'll quit, I think it was over thirty-seven vehicles we were pulled voluntarily. That was in a, not a very big space. And if you still drive around, we still got some school, people got some steps for a way, and they're being innovative with that. About one.
Go with six oh six Shaw Street.
Yeah. Yeah, just if 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 you want to get a picture of that direction, we're going six oh six Shaw Street, East Shaw Street, just drive down there, look.
I'm going around Camp One.
That, that is not Westport.
I I live in a small community, I'm the same way, so I know what's wrong.
Okay, if there is nothing else, I think we can close that.
Make the motion that we conclude this meeting.
I will second that motion, all in favor, aye? I think this has to be the shortest meeting since.
I think it's one of the shortest ones.